Good evening, welcome to Oak Harbor City Council Meeting for June 7, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. We begin each meeting with an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us if you please. Your invocation tonight is led by Reverend John Draskovic of Whidby Presbyterian Church.
Well done, thank you. I thought I would read a bit of scripture for you and before our prayer. This comes from Paul's letter to the Philippians from chapter four. Paul advises his community there in Philippi, "Finally, beloved, whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is just, whatever is pure, whatever is pleasing, whatever is commendable, if there is any excellence, if there is anything worthy of praise, think about these things. Keep on doing these things that you have learned, received, and heard, and the God of peace will be with you always." Let us pray together. Everlasting God in whom we live, move, and have our being, you have made us for yourself so that our hearts are restless until they find rest in you. Give us purity of heart and strength of purpose that no selfish passion may hinder us from knowing your will on this evening, and that no weakness keep us from doing it, that in your light we may see light more clearly, and in your service find perfect freedom." We pray this through Jesus our Lord who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God now and forever. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Tonight, first off, item number one on our agenda, well, it looks like, I guess, to begin with, we have a full council, so no excused absences necessary. Item number one is approval of agenda. Counselor Servadius.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We've got a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Councilman Servadius, second by Councilman Campbell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Presentations, to begin with then, item number two A, we have a proclamation in recognition of Pride Month, June. Counselor Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, whereas equality of opportunity and freedom from discrimination are among the basic, inalienable rights of every person, necessary for the development and exercise of our most vital capacities and preconditions of human flourishing, and whereas our nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that all people are created equal, and that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of the law, and whereas, over the course of our nation's history, the sphere of its moral recognition has expanded to include many persons previously marginalized, disenfranchised, and subjugated, and yet this progress remains imperfect, and the expansion of full civic recognition and protection remains incomplete. And whereas, for more than forty years, the month of June has commemorated the impact that gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender individuals have had on history, and today these celebrations attract millions of participants all over the world, and whereas the President of the United States of America, Barack Obama, the Department of Defense, and the Office of Diversity Management have added LGBT Pride Month as an annual observance, and whereas Oak Harbor is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of its ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of all of its residents, all of whom contribute to the vibrant character of our city, and whereas communities and the lives of its residents are enriched by core values of equality, dignity, and respect, Oak Harbor wishes to expand this observance to include not just LGBT individuals but all people, encouraging them to celebrate themselves and to have pride regardless of how they self-identify, and whereas the city of Oak Harbor is, quote, "A community where everyone is welcome and encouraged to thrive," end quote. Now therefore we, Bob Severn's mayor and the council members of the city of Oak Harbor, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Pride Month. Signed this seventh day, June 2016, Bob Severn, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Heisen. Nicely done. So, item number two B, under honors and recognitions, I'd like to ask Chief Merrill to join me at the podium, please. Fire Chief Ray Merrill successfully completed training and testing to achieve the Certified Fire and Explosion Investigator, CFEI designation, through the National Association of Fire Investigators International, and that's NAFI. The program recognizes an accepted method and standard of evaluating the qualification of individuals who are conducting fire, arson, and explosion investigations. Obtaining CFEI was very involved. It was a three-year process for Chief Merrill. It began with a seventeen-page application outlining training and experiences he's acquired through his forty-plus years in fire service. Next came sixty credit hours of coursework and study. Finally, a favorable credential review provided approval to take the complex written CFEI exam. Chief successfully completed the exam with a ninety percent score. That's a pretty high score. That's a good score. High for me, that's for darn sure. CFEI certification confirms Chief Merrill's knowledge of scientific methods to determine the origin and cause of fires and explosions. Special areas of investigation training include explosion effects, ignition testing, electrostatic hazards, particulate flow, chemical reaction, detonation, and combustion phenomena, fire modeling, hazards analysis, and hazards classification. Chief Merrill also trained in homicide forensics, investigation of fatality fires, documentation of fire events including photography and written records, arch mapping and electrical fires, vehicle fires, and arson investigation. Worldwide, just five thousand two hundred investigators hold the CFEI designation, and Chief Merrill is the only public sector CFEI in our region. As a member of the Region Three Fire Investigation Task Force, he could be called upon to investigate fires and/or explosions in Whatcom Island, Skagit, and San Juan Counties. Chief Merrill has over twenty-five years of service to the city of Oak Harbor. He has served as fire chief since 2012. Throughout his career, he has conducted over eight hundred and fifty fire investigations. He has devoted countless personal hours and funds establishing himself as an expert in fire and explosion investigation. We sincerely appreciate Chief Merrill for his dedication to keeping our community safe and admire his personal commitment to continued learning and growth in his profession. We applaud his achievements. Thank you. So, I've got a, I'm gonna give you a pretty cool patch here, and we're gonna get our picture taken together, it looks like. A very nice national certificate. And with that, I wanna say thank you again for a lot of hard work. That's obvious. And I've got one more thing. That mentioned that you've got over twenty-five years of experience here in Oak Harbor combined service, and guess what? You're gonna get a twenty-five-year fleece tonight. Twenty-five-year fleece, says, "Chief twenty-five-plus-years Ray Merrill, September 18, 1989, to March 31, 2011, and then back at May 1, 2012, until the present." And I hope it goes for ten or twelve more years.
I do too.
Okay. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mayor.
We are at item number three on the agenda, citizen comment, period. Citizens may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone. Please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. And I think our first is our own Frangie Christian.
Many of you know me, and I want to announce my intention. My intention this evening is to praise, to thank, and to inform. I'm going to start with the last one first. I'm hoping to inform the entire community about the absolutely wonderful emergency response that we have through our 911 system here. I want to thank everyone, some of whom are here, that has anything to do with the 911 system. I have talked to all of the heads and hope it's flowing down, and I'm seeking out and individually thanking the particular individuals that participated in the story I'm going to tell, and I want to obviously praise all of these people for what they've done. Now let me tell you what happened. My husband had his first heart attack on April the third. He had a stent put in and was told that nothing needed to be done again until June. April 13, I went off to Admiralty Headlight for some docent training. Near, around noon, he found he was suffering a second heart attack. He called 911, told them who he was, where he was, and that he was having another heart attack, and he needed an ambulance now. Apparently, he got one within just a very few minutes. Not only did he get an ambulance, he got a fire truck, and I believe possibly as many as three police cars. I'm not quite sure on that one. What happened was his, the EMTs went upstairs to discover that he was on the floor, not breathing, and his heart was not beating. They brought him back, they got him stabilized, took him down to the ambulance, his heart stopped a second time. Oh, I skipped the part where they gave him thirty minutes more of CPR in the apartment. Then down in the ambulance, they had to give him forty-five more minutes worth of CPR, and then they rushed him down to Whidby General. At Whidby General, they stabilized him. We'll leave him being stabilized there. Now we go to see, what did they do to try to find who I was and where I was? I eventually got contacted from three different sources at the service station across 20 from the hospital, because we had stopped there to get gas on the way back, the gal that was driving. Now, while we were stopped, a phone call came in from, we'll start with the most outlandish, one of the park rangers from the Fort Casey and Admiralty Light Park called because somebody had called the park to tell them that there was the problem. In the meantime, one of my neighbors had called the gal I was with twice, and I, when she got in the car, I said, "You've got to call Sally back because she doesn't call twice within that short period of time unless something is wrong with somebody. We need to find out who it is and what it is." Little did I know. And, I'm sorry, at the moment, I forget what the third one was, but there was, oh, the police had trouble getting me because I had given my cellphone to my husband that day because he was supposed to have gone somewhere else and didn't have his. So, they had made wonderful efforts, and part of all of this is a responsibility and response to what they did. So, I got to the hospital, they informed me what had happened, they said they needed to get him to the mainland and to Skagit Valley, and we did, and we went. We're now going to skip the next harrowing six weeks, and Bill had the advantage of not being conscious for the first two days of it. He was dismissed by his heart surgeon on Friday, doesn't need to see him again, quote, "ever." He's doing fine. Home Health has now said, "I'm sorry, you're beyond where we try to get people, so we're not going to see you anymore." And with that, we are back to living our lives, and I just wanna say thank you and how fortunate we are to have such a wonderful emergency response. Thank you.
Thank you, Frangie. That was a very nice, well, good ending story. Thank you for that. Went a little beyond three minutes, and we kinda knew it might, so thanks for your indulgence. Okay, we have Peggy Gibson.
I would like to say diddle to what she said about the 911 because my parents had to use it many times, but you also have an assist. When somebody's on the floor, they're right there to assist you to get them up, and that's very commendable. I want to thank you, Mayor, pro-Tim Mayor, Council, for allowing me to speak. I had a concern because today I went to the police department to talk to your code enforcement officer, only to find out you don't have one. So they sent me across the street down to Planning, and I talked to Cody, and he's supposed to be inspecting, I guess, permits and things. The reason why I have this concern, I did bring some pictures if you're interested in seeing them, they're on my phone. Within one block of me, I have a car that's on stilts. I think that's very dangerous for children. The house right behind me houses several men, and across the street is a vacant house now that has been graffiti'd very badly. The police went out and checked out, it has feces inside the house, but now the men across the street have parked a pickup in the driveway of that abandoned house with a bunch of car parts and trash in it. If you go around the corner, you're gonna find three cars with grass growing about this high with flat tires. If you go down the block, two houses, you're gonna find a pickup abandoned on the front lawn. You go around that corner, you're gonna find two big boats, I'd call them ships, but they're boats, plus a trailer parked there. I think this devalues property. I think it devalues the image of Oak Harbor because Oak Harbor is a very beautiful place to live, and I'd like to see that we get a code enforcement officer again. I realize that you had released this when things were slow back, I believe, 2009, but I think it's time to take it into consideration because this was just around my house. I've been driving around Oak Harbor, and you're gonna find this in a lot of places, and unfortunately Cody doesn't have the time to do this now because of all the permits he's getting. So thank you for taking this into consideration. Maybe get a code enforcement officer again, please.
Thank you, Peggy. I noticed, Carla, you've asked to speak, but we'll take that up during the windjammer? Okay, great. Anyone else for public comment that didn't get a chance to sign up? Anybody? Going once, twice? Okay. Consent agenda. Do we have any proposed changes? If not, we'll just adopt the consent agenda as presented? Item number five, city administrator, Dr. Merriman.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. First up tonight is topics about money. We have a couple of items that we're working on right now. One is bringing forward a budget calendar to city council. This calendar will lay out what our schedule will be for the rest of the year for adopting our next two-year calendar, so be ready, you'll see that coming to your, an email near you very soon. The other item we're working on, on June 27, I've sent an email out about doing a council retreat. I've gotten most everybody's responses back. I'll give you a call if I haven't heard back yet, just to make sure that that date works for you. If you have any ideas on topics and things you would like to talk about as well, please email those to me, and I can compile those and get that together. The next item is talking about people. We've had a few different things going on. Actually, we have eleven openings right now that HR, Kim Downer is working on getting filled. One of those, this last week, we did our assessment center for the new Human Resources Director. And then just so you know, we had a couple of people participate in that. We had two different panels, a writing assignment, and Kim Andrews did a sleuthy tour of the city with them to try to pick their brains and see what, who they were and what their experiences have been. We do have a lead candidate that we're speaking to right now. We were just sending an offer letter out today, and well, once that's accepted, we'll be able to release all that information and everything, but I just wanted to give you an update, that looks like we're getting really close. It'll probably be the first or second week of July, somewhere near that, this candidate will be able to come to work. So that's coming up pretty quick. Thank you to those also that came a little early tonight. You got to meet Terry Gallagher, who's our interim Police Department Administrator, and we're very happy to have him here. Already with just four days, he's doing a great job, and hopefully got a chance to welcome him and talk to him tonight. Recruitment list, I talked about that. The third item is just projects. You know, we talked about the wastewater treatment plant, we have our capital improvement plan, those things going on. At our department head meeting this morning, we went over a list of our, we call our pending items, and I counted them up today. We have twenty-one different contracts that are expiring this year that we have to bring forward. So your council agendas are gonna be getting a little packed. A lot of these are franchise agreements, we have five labor agreements to work on this year, and a list of others, so stay tuned for those. But what I wanted to do is just talk about money, people, and projects, and kinda lets you all know what we have going on so you can stay informed on those. The next meetings we have scheduled, June 15, please mark your calendars for that meeting to be from two o'clock to five o'clock rather than just our three to five. That will be a special meeting that's combining our monthly workshop and our second meeting for June, and that's so we can accommodate both meetings at one time, we can take action at that meeting, and that'll also free up the following week where council will be at the AWC conference in Everett from the 21st to the 24th. So doing a little bit of shuffling there, but I wanted to make sure that we had all those dates and times down, and that our public viewing list as well knew what our meeting schedule would be for this month. And the last item I have, I'm actually gonna hand this one off to Joel Stole, who's gonna give us our update on the wastewater treatment plan.
Mayor, council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. And I have my normal fun start off, which is the time lapse for the next month, so pay attention, it goes fast, but especially fun is when the crane goes up because you think it's gonna be this long ordeal, and all of a sudden it's just there. So I think we all kinda noticed that when we were looking, but you can see the crane off in the distance, that's getting everything ready for the crane to go up. You can see the first piece of it, and then all of a sudden, it's just like, whoop, crane's there. Yeah, they, it was kind of fun to watch that go together. They did a real good job of doing that without any issue. Now down on the bottom, you can see all those little pipes sticking up out of the ground. Those are all the micro piles that we've talked about in the past. So you have the one, one rig goes around drilling the holes, then another goes back around grouting them, and actually it drills a little bit, drills a little bit further and then grouts them. And we're moving along. If you look down in this, the lower portion of screen, if I can do this without hitting anybody in the eyeballs over there, that's a little bit deeper excavation that they're doing in that one area to accommodate some drains in the membrane building. But all in all, things are going along quite swimmingly, so that's a fun little snapshot of what's happened the last month visually. So over the last two weeks, we've completed the tiebacks and continued excavation activities with GMP4, which is our deep excavation. The micro piles, as you could see, they're moving right along. We've started installation of the production piles and installed the tower crane, as you saw, so that's all coming along, not just nice. This is an interesting little map. I pieced things together, and this is for a couple of reasons. North is up, so you can see the ball fields, and you can see, I'll use this one over here, you can see City Beach Street and Whidby Island Bank, and there's Wells Fargo up there on the corner, and the existing treatment plant. And what we have here is the deep hole that we've dug with all the sheet piling is that area there, and I didn't want there to be any misinterpretation, our treatment plant's size is really a little bit bigger than that, and you can see how it overlaps. I just did a rough thing in PowerPoint, but just so you could see, that we're doing the deep part of the excavation now, but there's much more to come. And this radius here is the radius of the crane. It has quite a reach on it, and at the furthest point can weigh, can lift eight, eight hundred pounds. And so what we did this for, or what Hoffman did this for, is so that we could reach off to the, to the yard over here and pick items that needed to be put into the site, but also so that we could reach this furthest corner over here. And you'll, you'll see that it has quite a sweep on it, and what they do on the, when they're not working or, well, that would be nights and weekends, they just let it ride free. So you might see it over the weekend, you might see it swing in different directions. That doesn't mean they're out there necessarily working on things, but it's just they do that because it just weather vanes to protect the crane. So that's a view looking towards Pioneer Way from, from the crane. Brett took this earlier today. So it's kinda give you a little perspective, and I might each time share another little photo looking down into the site or something, that's kinda, kind of exciting to see. So we had a really cool family fun day on May 21, and I mean cool because it was like raining and drizzling and literally cool, but we had a nice turnout. We had, I believe, three hundred and five is what we counted. We were competing on the East and West Danza, and who would get the most people to pass them. We had a lot of fun, little booth setup, we had a place where kids could get their picture taken. They had a safety course where they had to navigate around a construction site, and Tom was out there with a yield, a slow and stop sign, and kids were using it like Simon says, you know, it's a stop and go, and they were having fun. We had booths set up for information on all the things this city and Public Works does. And I think, I forwarded it out, if you haven't had a chance to check your email, we, you know, it's not often that we get nice letters from people about things that we do and we take pride in doing. And so we did receive a really nice letter from some, from a grandmother that really appreciated that we put it on, and I'm gonna take that and quite honestly put it on my cork board above my desk because that's why we do the jobs that we do, is because there are people out there that really appreciate the hard work that we do. So this is another fun one that we've been kind of egging along. It's, those, those two tanks are stormwater treatment, so the water that's pumped out of the deep excavation goes into those tanks and slowly makes its way through and comes out in a way that we can put it into the harbor. And the, I think it's the Arts Guild, which is the art club at the school, Kit Christopherson is in lead of that, and I mentioned this last time, they did the octopus on the, or kraken, or whatever you would like to call it on the far right, and they're finishing, they're doing the other tank with some salmon, and they have a little bit more work to do. You can see there's some colors missing, but I think they intend on finishing that up this Wednesday. The clock's ticking, school's almost out, once that happens, I don't know if we'll see the kids till next year, but if we're in May, I'd be running like crazy, so anyway. It's fun to have that on there, it gets the kids involved. I think it, it's really important because they go back home and they talk to their parents, they have some ownership in the project. And on, well, just yesterday morning, we had four students that are involved in the engineering program. Mark Deluer's brought those kids down, and we spent about an hour with them or better. They were on their way up to Western Washington for an engineering day up there, and we spent some time with our contractor and engineers, talking to them about kind of the cool stuff and the different pieces that go together to make a project, and how as engineers and architects, landscape architects, geotech engineers, all these different fields that are involved, how we have our little way of putting a postage stamp on the world, and we can go back and share with our parents the cool thing that we've, we've helped put together. Once again, it's, you know, it's a way to try and get the kids excited about things, and they're always welcome to come down and check things out. So coming up, next six weeks, we're gonna complete the excavation of that sump area that I showed you before. Continue installation of the micro piles, we're making some really good progress, but we've got quite a few to go, and I'm gonna look over my shoulder at Brett, and he's gonna tell me how many. I think it's over three hundred of those we have to put in.
Three hundred and four.
Yeah, three hundred and four of them that we have to put in, we're about a third of the way into it. That's, that's a lot, that's a lot of work, but they're moving right along. And we're gonna, in the next six weeks, we'll start seeing concrete being poured, which is really exciting. That starts getting us up out of the ground. That starts getting us up out of the ground. And that's, once I'm up out of the ground, I feel a lot more comfortable. And Windjammer Park integration plan, I won't steal any of Steve's thunder, but he's going to be coming to you a little bit later and talking about that. And so schedule, I haven't changed anything other than moving that red line a little bit over. I think it's getting close to time to kind of update a few of these bars. So I'll be working on that here in the next months so we can kind of keep you up to date on how things are tracking. And my famous last slide, we have plenty of ways to get ahold of us where, you know, as if you couldn't tell from me standing here, we love talking to you. So come on down, say hello. We'd love to, if you want to look at the crane from the parking lot, great. If you want to come up inside and learn a little bit more about what's going on, come on up, be glad to talk to you. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Any questions? Yes, Mayor Proton.
Mr. Stoll, thank you for working, taking time to work with the students of O'Carver High School. I've been there three times and this morning I went there again. It's beautiful, huge tank. It looked like huge aquarium facing the baseball field. And it's beautiful work apart by the high school students. And as I was parked on that side, the huge crane started to move, pulling out that big load of soil from the middle. And as the big arm went fast overhead, I moved a little bit. I was kind of scared. But it's beautiful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Wessner.
I'll just say that the ball players are really enjoying the crane when it comes over the field because it looks like it's just right on top of them. We've been hosting a tournament this week, so they've enjoyed that. It's very nice.
Councilor Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. How sad are you going to be when the crane goes home? Just on a scale of one to brokenhearted.
You know, I might have to take a vacation, go to a place else where there's cranes. I don't know. I'm pretty attached to it.
Pretty attached to it, yeah. Have we explored the possibility of raising additional funds for the plant if we do bungee jumping or something off the crane? Because I will sign up for that.
I thought of a zip line.
Yes.
I don't think, I think Nikki's cringing. I don't even have to look over at her.
She like grabbed her. Right, heart attacks. No, I really appreciate the weekly, or the biweekly updates and being able to see the progress. I mean, even just driving by on a daily basis, I get lots and lots of comments about it and I get to see it and we all get to see it and fast forward every couple of weeks. And it's happening. And just keep up the good work. And I appreciate all the community outreach that you and your team are doing very much so. And I think other people do as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Munt.
Also want to add my, commend the staff for that fun family day. Too bad it was raining because I think you would have had 3,000 kids. It was outstanding. And the small ones, their eyes is big, they could have stayed there all day watching the trucks and the coil thing that went up and down. And I mean, it just was so much fun. It was a delight. And they were troopers to stand in the rain and the wind, but it cleared up some. And the idea that the fencing around it is open, that you can see through, because I'll meet people in the marina or different places and they'll go, wow, I didn't know it was so cool to go by there and look at it. And so now it's like on their regular walk or bike path or whatever. They just had no idea. So it's a good idea that it's not just hidden. They can actually walk the work, watch the work. And then a few people have seen that 90% design that we have seen about the outside, about, not the fence, but the railing that kind of goes around, that's at different shapes and stuff. And I'm very excited as soon as we can get it out to everyone, because I think everyone is anxious to see the outside of the building and where things are. They're quite anxious. So as soon as we can get that out, I think that'd be a big plus. But some have sort of seen it. But as soon as we can, their impression is, wow, I never thought O'Carver would do a building this neat. So thank you to everyone.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, City Engineer, Joel Stoll. I was going to read that letter, but I think I'll pass. That was a really terrific letter from Mrs. Christiansen about her being a retiree and a grandmother and the fun time that she had. So thanks so much for a lot of hard work and a fun day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor comments, I have a couple of things. I got a copy of a letter to Deana Nichols. And I'll just read the first paragraph. Dear Deana, congratulations on earning the 2016 AWC Employee Benefit Trust Well City Award. City of O'Carver is one of 112 members that have earned the trust's Well City Award. You will also receive a 2% premium discount for your medical premiums in 2017. And that equates to somewhere in the 30,000, it's over 35,000, I think, the last time I looked at that, the savings that we get because of what that group of people do in the city. And I know that involves a lot of city employees and I want to commend you for the hard work to earn it, number one. 112 cities and I think there are 281 in the state of Washington. So we're one of 112 and that's wonderful. Thank you, staff. Also got a, and I won't say the staff member's name on this one, but he said, Bob, some food for thought on cutting expenses. So this is one of our staff here in O'Carver. Please see attached article. Solar panel costs and payback period have come down significantly. Net metering made in Washington incentives, longer life cycles, and easier maintenance have made solar much more attractive than just a decade ago. Payback period can be as little as five to seven years now. Then positive cash flow happens. If there isn't an issue with Navy flight paths, the city of O'Carver should investigate installing panels on the landfill or in the Public Works roofs. We could also look into small-scale wind generation similar to what the Navy's Child Development Center installed along Ragatta. And so I've talked with the employee, I've told them how much I appreciate, you know, the ideas, the thought that goes into this, and then expressing them with us. So just another, just another thing that staff can help and do help us often with. So another thank you to staff for that. And so with that, I think I'll conclude my comments and I'll turn it to the council. Mayor Proton.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I got one. I received a letter proposal from Mr. Scott Fraser, owner of the Fraser's Gourmet, by the way. And he's making a proposal for integration in the Windjammer Park. So I would like to present this when the time comes for that agenda bill on the integration of Windjammer Park.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilor Kendall.
You may only have one minor thing. When we talked about the AWC and everyone signed up to go, I said, I'm going. Two days later, I got a phone call from California during that week. My granddaughter's graduating from the University of San Francisco. I don't think I'm going to the AWC. I think I'll go to California and help celebrate. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Munt, anything?
Nothing really, just hope people who can come to the conference will. That'd be a good one.
How about anyone else? I won't single you out, any other, yes, Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. First a question and a comment. Mr. Merriman, you mentioned June 27th is the retreat. That's a Monday, is that correct? Your original email said the 28th, which is a Tuesday. Please just email us. Okay. And then the second comment is more of a, just a public statement. I emailed Anna earlier on the Granicus software. I know I had a side conversation with Dr. Merriman. Could we look at maybe moving along a yes or a no on that? I won't make a formal motion, but it's for me, I just want to be very public. And you know, I've sat through multiple trainings, phone calls. If we can't get it working, let's just not spend any more staff time on it. And you know, if we can keep the boards and commissions, I'm all for that. The rest of it, as far as the voting app and some of that stuff, I think it's time to move forward if possible. So I just want to make that very public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilor Wessner.
I am, just wanted to say that unfortunately, I'll have to miss the June 15th workshop slash meeting. I had planned a vacation way before we changed the date, thinking that I wouldn't miss anything. And gosh, now I'm going to. So I just wanted to let everyone know that and then I will see you all at the AWC conference.
Great, okay. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Councilor Heisen.
A couple of things quickly. Agree on the Granicus software thing. I had such high hopes for that. So I'm, I think it's as disappointed as everybody else, but yeah, at some point, you just have to decide how much time and energy you're going to put into something that's not working the way it's supposed to. I don't know if anyone in the audience or anyone watching made it to the movie theater this weekend on Saturday. The O'Carver Youth Coalition partnered with the Naval Hospital to bring the documentary Screenagers to O'Carver Cinemas. And it was absolutely fantastic. I wanted to watch it again immediately. And we had a wonderful, wonderful community response. The theater was almost full, I couldn't believe it, for a Saturday morning. So thank you to everybody that came. If you're interested in getting more information about the documentary, contact me and I will get that to you. And Chief Merrill, we, the mayor let you off the hook when you got your award and got to sit down without having to hear from all of us. But I was sitting here watching you guys, the two of you, and it seems like it was moments ago that I was sitting in Erica's seat, watching the two of you, about as uncomfortable as I've ever been in my life. And I cannot even tell you how impressed that I've been with you since then. It's been what, four years-ish? And I, yeah, words just can't express how impressive you are and how admired that you are by the community and the department. So just thank you for being you. You're a rock star and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor. Okay, we're on to item number six, public hearings and meetings. And we've had one sign up to speak and I think that'll be when we get to item number seven. But just to remind you, hopefully, I'll give you a chance in both of the next two items to speak. And if you can try to limit your comments to three minutes, it would be appreciated. And with that, we're going to go to 6A, ordinance number 1768, 2016 Comprehensive Plan Update and Resolution 16-18. Critical areas, ordinance, time extension, no action. If we're not going to do any action, what are you here for, Mr. Powers?
It's good enough for me, Mayor. Let's head on home.
Development Services Director, Steve Powers, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My time on this item will be very brief. It's mostly just as a brief introduction. As the council knows, we've been working on this comprehensive plan update since 2013. We are on time, which I think is a significant accomplishment for a community of our size and a staff of our size. Our community, our planning commission and the council have worked very hard to help us get to this point, but I would be remiss if I don't acknowledge the staff who have helped you get this far as well. I'll start with Kathy Gifford, who is our administrative assistant, who without her services, nothing gets done downstairs. So obviously Kathy is an important part of this. Dennis LaFever has been an important part. Ray Lindenberg has provided tremendous support to CAC on production of the document and mapping and quantitative analysis. And last, but certainly not least, Kat Kamak himself, who's been our project manager for the last three years and whose vision has gotten you to this evening. So without further ado, I'll step aside and turn it over to CAC. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So take a deep breath. We're here in the final steps of adopting this 2016 Comprehensive Plan Update. As Steve mentioned, we've been working on this for a long time. What I'm going to do is just kind of give a brief presentation at 30,000-foot level without diving into too many details, because it has been a big project and we've done a lot of changes. But I'll go over the process of all the things that we did to get here. So O'Carver has had a comprehensive plan since the 1960s, but after the Growth Management Act was adopted by the state, the city adopted its first GMA compliant plan in 1995. And since then, the plan has been updated annually with one major update in 2005. And this can be considered as the second major update and normally referring it to as the 2016 update. So as Steve mentioned, we started this, initiated this project in 2013. And one of the first steps that we did was the Department of Commerce had prepared this checklist that all cities could use, cities and counties could use, to check their comprehensive plan and see if we're compliant. And so we did that. We had checked it against the checklist and the checklist is provided in your packet. We identified what needs to be updated. Following that, we adopted a public participation plan that kind of identified how we're going to involve public input and how we're going to get information out to the public on this plan. And the public participation plan identified the planning commission as the primary review body for this plan, primarily because they have predictable time in their meetings. The monthly meetings, everybody knows about it. They always encourage public input at their meetings. And the meetings are broadcasted three or four times a week for four weeks straight. So that's a great way to get information to the public. One of the first steps that we did, and I think the council will remember, is we went over the vision statement that was there in the original comprehensive plan. And I'll go over the vision, because I think that's a very important component of the comprehensive plan. And I have the language in one of the, in the slides that follow, so we'll get a chance to look at it. But we spent a lot of time, we in the sense, city and the community, we did a survey on it. And city council and planning commission had a joint workshop and we went through many of the ideas and the vision and got it to where it is today. Everybody expressed that the intent needs to stay, we're not changing too much from the original vision. Everybody was kind of okay with that. What we did was dip the vision and kind of made it into a more digestible kind of statement. We divided it into culture, education, economy, and recreation. Those were the major themes that jumped out. And so it reads really well today. So this is the current vision that's in the comprehensive plan. Talks about culture, of course, you know, the namesake Gary Oaks is in our vision. We want to make sure that we invest time and effort into protecting them. Of course, all the beautiful views around here, we definitely want to protect that. So the culture kind of addresses what we consider as important. Again, you know, housing stock, neighborhoods, community policing, those are important values to hold as a city and it's been reflected in our culture statement. We also, there's also language in there to express our, how we want to protect our landscape and wildlife that we see on Whidby Island. And you know, these are all implemented through our critical area ordinance and several other policies as we do projects. So it's really critical to capture that in our vision statement. Education was, is really important. It comes up almost in every council meeting in some common form or the other. And so therefore, our vision statement includes that as well. Everybody's proud of the O'Carver school system and we want to continue to support them and facilitate the programs that they have and also including the community college. Economy, of course, is another important factor in O'Carver's vision. Our transportation network facilitates most of the economy here. So you see statements here about our network and infrastructure and how to continue to facilitate companies, high-paying jobs, low-impact jobs, green energy, and of course, all the services that we provide to businesses such as fire protection and police protection. Can't have a vision statement complete without recreation. Recreation is a big component on Whidby Island and in O'Carver. And our waterfront trail is one of the kind of jewel of O'Carver and we definitely want to continue to invest and improve in that. And so that captures that. And of course, our marina, one of the few cities in Washington that actually has a marina. And so we want to protect that asset as well. And then of course, pedestrian and protect that asset as well. And then, of course, pedestrian and bicycle alternate transportation exercise. So, all of that is captured in the vision. It is kind of, some of the information is transferred from the original vision. We've added a few things to reflect the current times. And very important part of the comprehensive plans, I thought it will take some time to go through that. Of course, we want to reflect our appreciation of the Naval Air Station that's located here, and the small-town atmosphere and lifestyle that everybody enjoys here. So, all of this is captured in the vision. And hopefully, over the years, this will be a driving force in trying to determine policies and making decisions for the city. So, the other things that we updated, of course, we looked at the demographics. Any plan needs to look at how the demographics are changing over time. So, the council and the planning commission had presentations on that. We looked at the employment. We looked at housing and income in O'Carver, crafted policies that are tailored towards that. We did the population projections in conjunction with the county. This process has been great. We have established a great working relationship with the county, and came up with the countywide planning policies with the city council adopted last year. And we've reflected all the changes from that document in our comprehensive plan. The population projections that we used takes into account NAS Woodby's projections over the next few years. So, those have been accounted for. The land use element, one of the workhorses of our comprehensive plan, sets the foundation for most of the other elements. This was a major change from the original land use element. This one has a different strategy on land use. It goes from a one-to-one ratio to a generalized land use map. So, we go from twenty land use categories to about seven land use categories. And this is a big step, because this offers a lot of flexibility for changes in the, to consider changes in the community, and to do so in a timely manner. So, I think this is going to help for future changes when needed. The land use element also created new neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are not new concepts to O'Carver, but the old neighborhoods were done for mainly statistical reasons. But I think the new neighborhoods are going to take a new form as we go into the future. They have been created based on housing types, or street layouts, or era in which the housing was constructed. Or maybe, you know, we know that the housing on the east side of Highway twenty and the west side of Highway twenty are different designs in terms of street network and the age. And so, those all played into creating these new neighborhoods, which I think, right now, it's just a seed. It has a chance to develop into creating unique policies for unique neighborhoods. And so, in the vision, you have a statement to try and protect that unique character of neighborhoods. You can achieve it by having specific policies for specific neighborhoods. And this is just the start for that. Again, talked about reorganizing the goals. Our old element had twenty goals. We reduced it to five, but we kept all the content and intent of the originals. So, it reads better now. Housing element, we updated the demographics in it. We looked at all the different kinds of housings in it, different types of size, density, affordability. We've reviewed the goals, and we've updated them. The utilities element is also updated. Minor tweaks, just to reflect the system expansions. No major shift in policies over there. Transportation element, council is aware that we're going through a transportation planning process. That plan will come forward to the planning commission and the city council for adoption here in the next couple of months. But we have taken policies from that and incorporated into the comprehensive plan, and also updated the six-year project list that will come forward to you, along with the transportation plan in a couple of months. Urban growth areas, this is, again, something that, due to the work that we did with the county, we had to reflect some changes in our policies with the countywide planning policies. One of the things that you remember from the urban growth areas is we did a buildable lands analysis, again, in cooperation with Island County, and taking into account the increase in population for the next twenty years, and with increase in population with NAS Woodby, we, the methodology has determined that there is sufficient land within O'Carver to accommodate the twenty-year population. So, no changes to the UGA are required with this update. Environmental element, we've updated policies on that. The state has several changes regarding the environment element, and we've updated those, cleaned up the language. Government services element, this is, this is an element that takes input from other agencies, like PSE, the schools, and college, and libraries. So, we reached out to all these agencies and asked them about what their plans are for the next twenty years, and they've given us some information, and we've incorporated that into our plan as well. And the community coordination element is primarily an element that's, that's a combination of all the existing goals within the comprehensive plan to reflect our relationship with the Navy. And so, we've done that, updated that element as well. Part of the twenty sixteen update also includes an update to the capital improvements plan. And so, this is, again, required by the Growth Management Act. We've updated the expenditures and the revenues. Again, it's a six-year sliding window, and continually moves forward. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. And with the update of the transportation plan, we have taken projects from that and already incorporated into the CIP. So, all the lists are updated and consistent. Development regulations, so, when we changed the strategy for our generalized land use map, it did impact some changes to the zoning language, just what zoning category implements what land use category. And we had to make some changes in that. And those changes are included in the package. So, part of your action on June fifteenth will change some of our zoning regulations as well. Critical area ordinance, this is a part of the requirement for the twenty sixteen update. However, staff is requesting an extension on this. The state has, through our CWs, provided a twelve-month window where you can, where cities and counties can take an extension and take time to update the critical area ordinance. Several communities around the state are doing that, taking an opportunity to extend the time, just because the comprehensive plan is such a large undertaking, and they want to take time to update the critical area ordinance. So, an extension with, for that is added into your packet. We already have a schedule for that. We're already working on it. It won't be, we'll do it probably within three or four months, but we're just going to take advantage of that extra time that the state is providing us. So, again, it's a, just to summarize, three-year-long process. We've been to the planning commission, city council, joint workshops. You've been updated throughout the process, so I wasn't going to jump into any of the details. A lot of information on this has been broadcasted through the TVs and planning commission meetings. We did a survey on the vision, got really good input from that. We did a checklist in March and did a determination in April. The planning commission held two hearings in May, and we're asking the city council to hold two hearings as well, this being the first one, and the second one on June fifteenth. And we're hoping that the city council will adopt the comprehensive plan on June fifteenth. So, what's included in your agenda plan with the action that we're asking you to take on June fifteenth would be an ordinance to update the comprehensive plan, to establish a new future land use map, to adopt the capital improvements plan, and the resolution authorizing the extension of the critical area ordinance update. So, those are the things that are included in your packet. Today, what we'd like you to do is open the public hearing, take any public input, and then, at the end of that, we ask you to continue the hearing to the June fifteenth meeting. And hopefully, we'll hold a hearing on June fifteenth meeting, and then take action. So, that's what we're requesting tonight. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Senior Planner Kamak. I think we'll start by opening the public hearing, and I'll call for testimony. Anybody here like to speak on this issue? Doesn't look like it's going to be a landslide, so. Going once, twice. Okay, how about council input? Yes, Councilor Menzel.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kamak, not sure if it needs to go in there, but just an idea, under economy, I don't know if it's under economy or utilities. I hope we can add to it that we have fiber optics, that we can continually to push for this, because I think this would open up employment for people to work out of their house. Coming back from San Antonio, there was an accountant on my plane, he's going to work from his home, but he's going to work for a company in Seattle. But he has fiber optics and some other special cables to have secure lines for financial stuff. But with our scenic, small-town, friendly atmosphere and stuff, it would be great if more people could just work for their home. It's good for the environment. But we've got to get fiber optics in to open up this opportunity. So, I don't know if that would be under utilities or economy, but I see that as part of our EDC to offer to our citizens.
I think there are some policies in our utilities element that address support or facilitating communication networks, fast communication networks. It's in our vision statement as well. So, I think we have enough to not be in the OA.
All right. And one more?
Yes.
So, you mentioned that right now, you didn't think we needed to, there's availability for building for what we need for housing in the UGA, didn't need to be expanded. But if we find that the Navy is going to be expanding even more, will we be able to annex an area to offer neighborhoods, condos, whatever's needed, within the city limits?
Absolutely. There are multiple ways to do that. One tool that you, that we'll have with the newly established land use element is when properties come into the city, now they will have a choice of what zoning they want to be in. In the previous comprehensive plan, it was a one-to-one ratio. So, whatever land use was determined, you could just come in as only that. Now, you have an option, because of the generalized land use map, for example, our low-density residential gives you an option to be either R1, R2, or R3. And so, if land is being annexed in, now the property owner has a choice of choosing a different density. So, you can increase the density with the existing land to a higher density to accommodate a larger increase in population. If that doesn't work, we still have options through the countywide planning policies. They're built into it on how the city can approach the county and work with them in this, you know, the updates are done every seven years. So, if we want to make a change somewhere midstream, there are certain criteria that we would have to meet. And if we meet that criteria, then we say, okay, you know, we need to account for this extra population, therefore, we need to make UGA modifications. So, there are a couple of ways to tackle that as soon as we know information.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. Just would like to make comment on chapter thirteen. This is about the government services element. And this concerning the law enforcement level of service and response time, and fire protection level of service and response time. Although this is not included in this year's update, it's good to know that it is part of the comprehensive plan. On the level of service, the current police ratio per capita is one point sixty-three non-management law enforcement officers. And I think this is getting better, because I think it was about ten years ago, when the ratio was one point four zero police officers per capita, which is per one thousand population of our community. And the response times on this comprehensive plan is two minutes on emergency calls for law enforcement. And for fire protection, the response time is five minutes. And although there is kind of shortage of personnel on fire and police departments, they were able to respond on emergency, like the story made by Ms. Franje Christian. And thank you to the police and fire department for their dedicated service to the city and make our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. Other, yes, Councilor Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, you and Mr. Powers both, you have a really unique ability to be able to explain really complex concepts in very understandable terms. I giggled when you wrapped up. You're like, okay, so that was the last three years, you know, just, no big deal. So, thank you for helping us all understand the work that you do. And if you could touch on this, it's, you know, you mentioned the preserving the views and the waterfront, and how that's a priority. And I know that you did that big view corridor study, I think it was a couple of years ago. And I heard a lot of concern from the community when there was talk about putting that, a new building on the corner of Pioneer and Bay Shore, and how it was going to be a few stories tall. And a lot of people were really concerned about the view, and how tall buildings can be. And while I didn't know the particulars, I do know that the view corridor is something that you've studied rather extensively. And so, if you could just touch on that, and how, and what we're doing to preserve that?
So, the way it would work is, because of the studies that we did in establishing our scenic corridors, when a development proposal comes forward, we will have several ways to discuss with the property owner, ways to design their site, so that we can preserve some of the views, without compromising their development capacity. So, the policies will help us, help staff initiate that discussion, so that they can start thinking about the design, and how to balance those out. So, for example, the Bay Shore development. And I think one of the important views is that Jensen Street, you know, as you're coming down Jensen Street right now, there's a view. And I think in the previous development proposal, which is not, which is kind of dead and gone, there was, we used our policies to start a conversation with the property owner, so that they can kind of extend a pedestrian pathway through their development, and make it an amenity, and that way preserving the view. So, it's not a code requirement, thou shalt do this, but we use this, these policies that we have to identify what's important to the community, and then use that to try and work through design in incorporating that. So, that's how it would kind of all work.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Yes, Councilor Watzinger.
I have a question, and it may have been answered in the past. So, excuse me if it has. It's kind of a specific question. In the capital improvement plan section, it talks about, and I debated whether asking this here, or when we get to our Windjammer Park plan, but it talks about an RV park redevelopment as a capital project. And it's quite a bit of money, one point two million dollars. And I was wondering what specifically that was for. If, I don't, I don't, I want to see this conflict with this, when the RV park, you know, is not shown in this. What are we planning for, for that?
It's a great question for Steve Powers.
Oh, okay. I was going to look at Dr. Merriman, too.
So, it is an excellent question, and it's one which finds us sort of having one foot in two different planning efforts that are coming together at the same time. So, we know that the Windjammer Park integration plan does not propose replacing the RV park within the confines of Windjammer Park. So, that sort of answers part of that question. We've had this longstanding RV park renovation as part of our capital projects, and so, we can, we're continuing to reflect that in the capital improvement plan until such time as the council may make a final decision as to the disposition of that project. So, if we're not going to proceed with it, we'll take it out at the next available opportunity. If we are going to proceed with it, then we leave it in the capital improvement plan and move it into the six-year list when we're ready for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments, suggestions, input? Okay, seeing none, I guess that we will continue this public hearing to the June fifteenth meeting. And we'll go on to item number seven A, resolution sixteen dash fifteen, Windjammer Park Integration Plan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to present this item to you this evening. And I'll fill a little time when Mr. Reine is pulling up the correct presentation. As you know, we've started working on this project back As you know, we've started working on this project back in the tail end of last year. And it is the genesis, of course, of the Clean Water Facility. We knew that by building the Clean Water Facility within the confines of Windjammer Park, we were creating an impact to the park, both a physical impact, we're disrupting some portions of the park, but we're also impacting in terms of how the remaining facilities might be utilized and enjoyed by the public. As a result of that, we came to the council and said, look, it makes sense for us to think about how are we going to actually integrate this new facility into the park? How are we going to rebuild around this construction project? And let's think a little bit broader than those terms, think about the entire facility itself. That's what led us to propose this planning effort, and thankfully you approved it. And we've been off and running since December of last year. So thank you, Mr. Reine, for the presentation. I've covered a little bit of this already, what's the purpose of the plan? It was the idea of how do we integrate the facility so that it's an asset to our community's unique waterfront park? And secondly, a lot of energy, a lot of time, a lot of thought put into how do we best engage the community so that we can hear from them through this master planning process to determine what park elements or think park things, what are those things that the community wants to see within the park? And how do we go about doing that? Before I go any farther, I want to acknowledge that we do have some members of our community advisory group in the audience this evening, and when it comes time for a public comment, perhaps one or two of them may wish to speak to the council. So you've seen this slide a lot of different times over our various briefings with you, the council and the CAG or Community Advisory Group process. Again, looking at the screen behind Dr. Merriman, we started off with you folks back in December of 2015. Here we are at the other end of the spectrum of May and June of this year. In between, we held five meetings with our community advisory group. Two of those were combined with public open houses. We've had a number of touch points along that path with Parks Board, Arts Commission, Planning Commission, council at your workshops, as well as, I think, one or two times within your formal meetings as well. So we think this has been a very thoughtful and deliberative process that is providing you this product this evening. So what did that process look like when we were working with the community advisory group? And what did we really gain out of that and what have they told us? Well, at the conclusion of our process, what we think we really learned from them is that they support the recommended plan, not because everybody got everything that they wanted. And we understand that, and they understand that. And, but because it was an inclusive process, because it was one where many different ideas and questions came to the table, they were discussed. The consultant team, I think, did an excellent job of trying to take that feedback and that input and incorporate it and/or explain how it might be difficult to achieve some of those things. And we believe that the community advisory groups, again, supported the plan because it was an inclusive process. That design team listened to them, and that feedback was incorporated. One of the things that we've learned at the end of this process was the CAG's enthusiasm for us to continue on. We heard loud and clear from a few of the members, don't let this be one of those efforts that never sees the light of day, instead collects the dust of the bookshelf. We were encouraged to continue with our positive momentum because we felt like we have built some momentum here. In fact, we had one or two of our members who already volunteered their time to help us continue with the momentum. In fact, I think they were going to drag us through the process no matter what. Isn't that right, Frangie? And so staff wholeheartedly supports that. We recognize that we are presented with a unique opportunity because we're going to have this major construction project. We're going to accomplish some of this, what I'm going to talk to you about this evening, as part of that project. And I'll touch on that in a few moments. And it sets us up to continue this ball rolling as we move forward. So what is the actual preferred concept? This is the end result, is this master plan drawing? We've talked to you about different versions of this over different briefings. We showed you three basic concepts that had some similarities, but each were different in some fashion. What you see on the screen is really a compilation of the best pieces of each of those three basic designs before, and then a further refinement to that design to the one that's here for you this evening. And so just touching on a few of the features, and I'd be happy to go into more detail if council has any questions. I'll start on the west side of the park, there's Bixma Drive as it comes into the park. We have a number of things happening in that area. One is we've identified this as the main gateway, the main vehicular entrance into the park. Possibly we relocate the windmill there. That's part of the plan to have that as a visual terminus at Bixma, also to give you a visual cue when you're farther north on the highway. We've incorporated parking in this crescent-shaped parking lot, which makes more efficient the parking that we have there today. Surprisingly to the staff, this is one of the more widely supported aspects of the plan was this parking configuration. It includes small event center, landscape gardens. And if the council and the community so chose, we also looked at how we could incorporate a community center into this space. That's not a necessary component, it's not actually shown on this preferred plan, but there is room available to do that. In the southwest corner of the park, this is one of our more active areas. It's also being used the term living room because there are different places to sit and to congregate, but also then to have active uses with adults and with children. So we have basketball, we have bocce, those kinds of things are the conceptual ideas that would take place in this location. The center of the park is probably one of the other areas that was discussed a lot, both at the CAG and then in the community feedback that we've received. Obviously, we know that we do a lot of events in the park. We do things such as car shows and carnivals, we end marathon races, we do other things. And one of the primary comments we've heard from the public is to make sure that we preserve that space for those activities. What's sort of interesting about this concept is that some look at it and think, well, this is smaller than what we have right now. And really what we've done is we've taken the spaces that were sort of scattered about in our existing park, and they're all aggregated in this particular area. So we actually end up with a larger, open area, free and devoid of structures than we presently have today. The space could also be lined for formal athletic use if that was what the community desired. We see a reimagined and reshaped lagoon, cleaning up the edge where we get most of the swimming activity and most of the folks sitting and enjoying the sun, providing a more naturalized and recontoured area on the west side. Our largest stage area is right in the center of the park, intended to handle a variety of events using different portions of the park for its backdrop. Probably the single most requested and single most supported concept or idea is a splash park, which is located here, adjacent to the lagoon, at the end of our terminus or a promenade from Pioneer and immediately south of the Clean Water Facility. It has a prominent place within the park. It's the thing which, I think we actually had people talking to us about a splash park before we began this effort. Council may recall that. And so it obviously is one of the key components of this proposed design. As we move a little closer to the Clean Water Facility, outside of it, onto the south side is a rather large public plaza that could be used for a wide variety of activities and events, whether it is arts and crafts shows, whether it is smaller car shows of some sort, whether it's events that various civic organizations or the city would place, would put on. There's a space for that. As we move our way to the east side, we see reorganized parking along what is now the City Beach Street. We're really taking that, making it more of a driveway than a street. Parking area, still circulation to the south of the facility, large playground area to serve the center portion of the park. And then this area here is where the ball fields are currently located. What this plan shows is what happens if the community and the council identify a location where we would like to build new ball fields. Key, key important point is that there would be no contemplation of the ball fields being eliminated from this space until they were recreated at some other location. Obviously interspersed throughout the entire design is a series of pathways, landscaped areas, both more formalized and natural. We have wetlands that we need to enhance and preserve as part of our permit requirements. There's a wide variety of things happening within the park itself. So some of the three big bullet points, I think I've touched on these so far, but the key things is part of this design. Number one, the green space easily accommodates the community activities. I've talked about how that is aggregated. We believe that it is appropriately sized to handle the types of activities that our community enjoys seeing in this space today. It does not show the replacement of the RV park within the border of Windjammer Park. That was a process, a conscious decision. We went through a lot of conversation with our community advisory group and public input as well. While it was a difficult decision, what we showed them to help them with that was if you take that number of spaces that we have today, which is roughly 52 or 53, if you design those to the standard of today and try to put those back, it would take about roughly half of the park area to do that. CAG seemed to think that that was too much space. So if we looked at how many of the modern-sized spaces could we put in the footprint that we have today? That's about 17 spaces, that's a fairly small number. Ultimately, they decided that they didn't think that use was what should be in this park going forward into the future. That's why it's not shown. And then the third bullet point I've touched upon, ball fields would be relocated potentially in the long term if another site is identified and those fields are constructed. How do we go about making this a reality? For a couple of the meetings, the CAG was very interested in what's this going to cost? And so while we can give some estimates, one of the things that we did was to look at similar types of park facilities that our design team had been involved with. I won't go through these, each of these on the screen for you. We've talked a little bit about them at one of your workshops. These are for comparison purposes, some are more urban, some are a little more suburban in nature. They're larger and smaller, but you've got a range from a million dollars an acre, or $450,000 an acre to $2.5 million per acre, so it's a pretty broad range. What we see with ours at the conceptual level, planning costs, including 30% contingency estimate, we find ourselves in the range of about $630,000 per acre. How do we match up funding to the different phases of the project? And I'll talk about phases in just a moment. We see the pieces coming along with Phase 1 is actually being part of the Clean Water Facility project cost. You've heard us talk about that, those are those direct impacts that the sewer fund has the obligation to undertake the construction, the restoration, and the mitigation because of the impact of the project. Beyond that, when we move into 1B and the other phases, we look at other funding sources and other funding scenarios. Mr. Servadius, I looked into WSRCO, Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, which we abbreviate to RCO, which is a typical funding source that we have used in years past for a variety of park projects. And they have a whole list of different types of funding sources that apply to different types of outdoor recreation purposes. That's why you see it listed so many times there. We looked at this slide the other day as well, just other possibilities on how we go about seeking other funding to support our community park. So getting close to the end here, this is the preferred or the suggested phasing plan, rather. So again, Clean Water Facility, and we've identified everything in this area here as being Phase 1. So those are the places that we have direct construction impacts today. Either we're going to tear up those areas because those are facilities that need to be removed so that we can do construction, or there are facilities that we have displaced or portions of the park that we're impacting because of lay-down area for equipment, those kinds of things. Phase 1B is immediately to the south of that, and again, most importantly, would pick up the splash park. And as you've seen by looking at our draft capital improvement plan, we see that also happening in 2018. That's our goal on the staff's side, so that is basically hand-in-hand with the construction of the Clean Water Facility as well as Phase 1. Phases 2, 3, 4, and 5, 2 takes us over to the west side where Bixma Drive is at. 3 would get us into the center portions of the park. 4 places out along the waterfront and include the lagoon. And 5 is over on the east side of the park in the area that's generally taken up by the ball fields today. What's next? I hinted at it at the beginning of my conversation with you, which is that we need to continue the efforts of capitalizing on momentum, looking for serious funding sources for these phases, assuming council adoption of the plan. Make sure we reflect these things in our capital improvement program so that they're eligible for grant funding. We then also see that there's a whole nother level of public participation because each of these phases, obviously they're not ready for construction, they need further refinement, further ideas. How do we fit this thing into this space, that kind of conversation? So there's another whole series of engagement with the public that we envision. Your recommended action this evening is to approve Resolution 16-15, adopting the Windjammer Park Integration Plan. And of course, I'd be happy to help you with any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Before we share this here on the dais, I'd like to open this up to public comment and ask you to try to keep it close to three minutes. But first on the list is Carla Friend.
Carla Friend, I'll make it brief. I totally support this integration plan, so I hope you guys go for it.
Thank you. Mr. Potella.
Skip Potella, 1090 Southeast Hathaway. I was a member of the CAG, and as Mr. Powers mentioned, we did put a great deal of time and effort into this plan. We ended up taking about 20 pounds' worth of items that the community wanted and stuffing it into a, we'll make it a 10-pound bag, but we managed to win it down to about 15 pounds' worth. And I think it's a real good program that we've come up with. It, as you can see in the plan, it's phased, there's different areas that can be worked in gradually. So it's not all one shot, so you know, we can, portions of the park will be under construction or being built and then can be utilized and then shift to another part, but once funding comes. The key once again is we really need to keep the momentum going. There's been a lot of effort put into it, and that's one of the major concerns that was brought out towards the end was how do we keep this momentum going? It's a nice plan, it's a good plan, it's one that I think the community should and can, ought to get behind. And I'm real excited about seeing all these different aspects come into fruition and for the public to use. So that's one of the things that we really need to keep, is we need to keep the momentum going, keep the enthusiasm going, and get this thing kind of off top dead center and keep it going so it can be one of the crown jewels in our city and the park system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potella. Other comments?
Frangie Christian, a part of the CAG. And you may have noticed a sidebar there about when Mr. Powers was making his presentation. I endorse the program and the plan, but the part that I got really up on my soapbox about was if you don't have a first one or two successes and get the public behind you and keep this plan alive, you will lose the momentum, and I have no idea what you're going to wind up with. But the plan itself is a good plan, it needs to be endorsed and worked on.
Thank you, Ms. Christian. Other comments? Mr. Hovey?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Hal Hovey, I was a member of the CAG as well. I would like to reiterate the previous comments, this was a really good process. It was transparent, it was inclusive, it was open, it was pretty well advertised. And overall, I think that the concept... And overall, I think that the concept they came up with is a good one. There were some things I didn't agree with, but you know, nobody got 100% of what they had hoped for. We've done the easy part, which is the talking, the listening, the arguing. The hard part is ahead for you and the staff in the city. And that is deciding what comes next. You know, in two years, the new sewer plant will be up and running, and there will be a lot of dirt that's being spread around the places where the old sewer plant was and the area on the north side of the park. Whether you choose to adopt this plan or not, something needs to be done over top of all that dirt. And it's not too early to start this process again. We need to make sure particularly that 2017 funding is in place for the parts of the park that need to be restored that aren't covered by the wastewater treatment plant funds. So whether those funds for this process come out of city funds or you're able to get grants already for 2017, you know, your budget's coming up right away. The second thing I'd like to address is the RV park. I know there's going to be a lot of discussion over the next few years, maybe even at this meeting, about what happens with the RV park. And the concept doesn't necessarily say that this is going to happen. This is just a concept. I've heard that we make anywhere between $80,000 and $125,000 a year in profit from the RV park. And there have been claims out there that we could more than double that amount if the RV park was improved, and it definitely needs some improvements. Nobody seems to know really how much the RV park contributes to the commercial enterprises in the city. There's no doubt that it contributes some, but how much can we quantify that? You know, we learned, well, let me back up. If we haven't already started trying to quantify exactly what that contribution is to the commercial businesses, we need to start doing that. We need to spend the next few years before a decision is made on Phase 2, you know, what is the contribution total? And not just rely on anecdotal data. We need to go off of what real numbers are. If we were KOA coming in here to make an RV park, we would come up with years of data of how much the RV park contributes not only to the profits but also to the community so that we can persuade people to build it. We learned in the community room debacle that if we don't do sufficient planning early, that it's going to be difficult to make an informed decision one way or another. And I'm not saying one way or another, whether it should go or whether it should stay. But two years is right around the corner. We need to start the process of finding out how much it contributes and whether we're going to be able to make an informed decision or not. So again, I thought the process was great, and I appreciate your time. And I hope that we start another process for the Phase 1B right away.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. Anyone else?
Peggy Gibson again. I'm just kind of interested in the baseball field. I know that's way down the site, but I know that's an important part for the kids and stuff. Have they got a place already picked out to relocate that?
We'll answer that, I think, in a few minutes.
Got to hit a yip.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it up to City Council. And who would like to go first? Councilor Wessinger?
I'd just like to first say thank you to the Citizens Advisory Group for all of the time that you put into this. I know it was a lot of hard work, and I do appreciate your input and the process and our staff that worked really hard with this group as well and all of the outside contractors, if you will, that helped with this. I see, and again, back to the capital improvement plan and just sort of fitting in with this and the phases, I see you have, and there's numbers in here and estimates as well, but for Phase 5 for the ball fields, like a $3.497 million sort of plan for that phase. Does that, do these numbers include cost of replacing the ball fields? Or is that just to improve the land sitting in the park? And if, you know, I'm asking just in the future and in our plans, you know, that that's something that maybe that we think about planning for that cost?
Well, the short answer is that we have in right now, in the, we try to budget for land acquisition for parks every budget cycle. We don't always have success in doing that, but I think that if this plan was to become adopted and so that we knew that this was the vision we were working towards, that would help us help you as council budget for that land acquisition and begin that long process of identifying that location because we haven't done that yet. So I think that's the answer to this lady's question, is that we don't have, we haven't identified a location, but if we start that budgeting process, that gives us essentially the marching orders to begin that work.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank the work of the Community Advisory Group and working with the Parks Board, our commission, Planning Commission, and of course, more the work of the Development Services Department. I would like to start on this beach proposal that came from Mr. Scott Fraser, owner of the Fraser's Gourmet Hideaway. And his proposal is to integrate this in the Windjammer Park plan. His proposal is for the Windjammer Park to create a soft sandy beach that will enhance the lifestyle of the citizens and visitors of Oak Harbor. In his proposal, he included how much soft sand is needed in the layout of the soft sandy beach. And he also stated in the proposal, this has already been done in a couple of places, one in Vancouver, Canada, and one in Hood River in Oregon. So I think this was also sent to the rest of the City Council, or at least three of the council members received this proposal. So I'll pass this on to our city clerk for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Now, on the plan itself, I think I stated this during our workshop about space allocated to accommodate a future community center. And this on page 392. And another one on page 425, this in our agenda bill. On the letter K of the plan, it states a potential community center location. I think the Community Advisory Group realized that there is a community interest for a community center, and that's the reason why they have allocated the space for that purpose. During the discussion of putting the community center on top of the wastewater treatment plant, there were community members that agree that we need a community center and put it there. But however, there were some opposing views saying that they want to see a community center but in another location. And with this integration plan, I think this could be a possibility, so we need to pursue on this route to build a community center. There are phases on this plan. I think we can also integrate on one of these phases, a community center. I know that it's not part of that funding, you showed earlier that how much it costs to develop a space per acre. So I think we will need another funding source to build a community center. And in one of my research, I came across the community development platform that the city can obtain grant for this purpose of building a community center. So I think we need to continue pursuing this route. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Kate? Yes, Councilor Campbell.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council want to guess what I'm going to talk about?
Not a clue. RV park.
The RV park, yeah. I like the way this plan is laid out. Obviously, I'd like to see the RV park there, but I'm not going to necessarily vote no against anything because the RV park is gone. However, those of us that are in the planning stages need to recognize what value that RV park has to the city of Oak Harbor. Now, I own an RV. I've probably in the last 10 years been in 1,000 RV parks. And let me tell you something, there are two that are really stick out in my mind. One is this one. I've never stayed in it, but it's there, and the reason it sticks out in my mind is its location. People come to this RV park because of where it's located. If you're talking about moving it, if you move it somewhere else, it's a dead issue. Nobody's going to go there unless it's across the street to the Friend property. If you could buy that property and put it there, we'll keep it full. I can tell you that, and I asked this question, did anyone go down to the RV park and talk to the people down there, just to get their thoughts? I was told no, so I went down three times. And I would just stop if I'd see somebody outside, stop and ask them a couple of questions. Number one, what would you say if I told you that we were going to close this park? Most of the reactions I got was just a blank look and open mouth. The best one I got was, what kind of stupid idea is that? Because of the location. Keep it there, don't move it. Another conversation I had was, please don't move it, keep it here, we like it here because of what this park gives us. And even though we don't necessarily know how much they spend in Safeway and Higgins and places like that, they do spend money there. So it is a little bit. One person brought up an excellent idea. In all of the RV parks I've stayed in around the United States, the least I've ever paid is about $33 to $34. The most I've ever paid is 60. One person asked me, man, why did you only charge 25 for this? You could get double that. So if the RV park stays down there in that general location, the price should be somewhere between 35 and 45 bucks. It'll pay for itself. In the past, recent, this is my last one, in the recent past, we've had some conversations. And generally, what I heard was, we need to bring more money and more tourists in this town. The RV park closes and goes away, we'll lose how many ever tourists that we wanted to come to this town. They won't be here. And their money won't be here. So the question is, do we really want to, and this is a small group of tourists, I'll give you, but do we really want to say, we need and we're going to go get tourism in this town? Are we going to do that for a fact? Or are we just going to say that, and when the time comes to do something about it, just sort of ignore it and not do it? Last item, the sand beach that Scott has recommended, I think is an excellent idea. The one problem I see with the sand beach down there, unless it's elevated about six feet, is how do you keep all the driftwood off the sand? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Yes, Councilor Almberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm going to jump on this thank you bandwagon to Mr. Powers and to all of the people who served on that CAG because you came up with, I think, a good concept. And I think everybody understands on the CAG that it's a concept, it's a work in process, it's a development. And the use of that soil that's stockpiled there around the existing or the new wastewater treatment plant and the disposal of that material on site is going to drive a lot of priorities. The priorities are also going to be obviously driven by money. And you have my complete support in keeping the momentum going. I think the phasing that you have on there makes sense. I like the concept of the RV park. I haven't done any valuation or any estimates on what it would take to do it on the Friend property, but a concept that may be worth considering is if the city really wants an RV park down there, the city could potentially, depending on the source of funds, buy the Friend property with conditions that an owner, not necessarily the Friends, do the RV development, and the land would be, the purchase would go with the land lease where the city could be the lessor, and the developer could have ownership of the operation. But it's going to take quite a bit of evaluation to see really where the performer comes in on something like that. But it has, it has potential. The priority right now, obviously, is getting the wastewater treatment plant done. And then your Phase 1 that's connected to that has more promise of having those items completed in conjunction with the wastewater treatment plant. And that gives us some momentum. I like to personally think, and I've talked with the mayor and others about this, we have four years to make a 40-year impact in this community. That's really, really important. And so I'd like to say, let's go with the 4x40 plan. Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Servadius.
Thank you, Mayor. So in general, I pretty much, I support everything here, and I too would like to thank the citizens, the Community Advisory Group, staff that was involved with this. When you, I don't remember if it was Mr. Powers said, you know, we're going to have this thing rolled out by May when we approve spending the money on it. My first thought was, no way. And yet you've come pretty close to fulfilling that promise, so I appreciate that. So in general, like I said, I support pretty much everything that's on here. What I don't support is spending any more money on plans. So I think between the Roger Brooks and it's time, and now this, it's time to actually get on with getting on. When I look at this, you know, we have a phenomenal piece of property that I think has just kind of evolved over time. It's not necessarily with a lot of deliberate planning. One of the instances of that, I think I've said it publicly, but I've asked Hank, just to the east of the windmill, there's this hedge, it's a V-shaped hedge that exists. And I've asked everybody I could find, why is that there? Why is it maintained? And no one knows. It's like a little Stonehenge emblem thing out there. So we have these things that have evolved, and this is, I think, the first legitimate chance at doing something that's very deliberate, very planned at the moment. I won't say affordable because I'm not sure where all the funding sources will come from. We can take it on in phases. A couple of things specifically that I see that are important to me. One is when we look at Phase 1, which is the top half there where all the dirt is being stockpiled, that we keep in mind some form of Bay Shore easement. And I'm not suggesting that Bay Shore goes through, but if Bay Shore could at least extend two-thirds of the way from the west to the east with a possible turnaround, it opens up the ability for ingress into the park, for people to park there, possibly some Anglin parking. But it also opens up the opportunity, hopefully long-term, for that north, I forget what you guys called it, the north business district.
Commercial properties.
Yeah, for those properties to be developed and still have some ingress egress from the south side of their properties. Once again, Bay Shore, I don't really foresee it going through, but I think it could still, there could possibly be an extension and easement. And I just want to make sure as we plan, since Phase 1 will happen very quickly, it's Phase 1, that there is the future thought process put in there for some easements that a, an access road with a turnaround could possibly go in there. a, an access road with a turnaround could possibly go in there. The community room, Mr. Pagal, thank you for bringing it up. I'm going to touch on this very briefly. When the majority of council voted to rescind putting it on top of the wastewater treatment plant, there was a lot of talk about, hey, as long as we budget for it in this next budget cycle, that's something I can strongly support. So, Mr. Merriman and the mayor, as you develop your budget, please keep that in mind. That's something that I'll be looking for, and it's a chance for all of us or those that voted accordingly, and I don't mean to be crude, but for us to put our money or our mouths was in getting some possible community event center built in there. The beach proposal, I very much support in some fashion. I've talked to Mr. Frazier, and I appreciate him having the vision to bring that up. To me, it's an experimental thing that could happen in the bottom part of Section 4 or Phase 4. The dunes, in concept, would be neat if we had a lot more real estate, if we were in ocean shores or seaside. That's a natural progression, you go over the dunes to get to the beach. I don't know that we have enough real estate here to make that happen, but I do think a sandy beach that's elevated, protected from the environment would work very well as a trial in Area 4, and we've got time to plan for that. And then you would naturally transition over to the lagoon from that sandy area. I'd like to take it one step further, as I've talked casually with Mr. Powers. If you cite from essentially Dillard's over to the Flintstone, what is the terminus over there at the end of the boardwalk? Is that Flintstone? Do we have a name for that park?
Flintstone Park.
Flintstone Park. You know, there's a natural curve that's eroded, and like I say, I'd like to take it one step further, where we reclaim some of that with some kind of shoreline restoration project that we can actually move out a little bit, and there's room for the beach there. So, I very much support the, a sandy beach, I think it would get a lot of use if it's protected, if there's a way to protect it from the elements. And last but not least, I guess the windmill, you know, as we look at 1B and 1, if 1B occurs, the windmill has to go, I'm sorry. Yeah, the windmill, I think it's a 1 or 1B. It's hard to see here where it would be placed.
It would be in, it's inside of Phase 1 line.
Okay. So, you know, maybe you've got 2 there as its whole big section, but that obviously could, I know this is somewhat fluid, this is just general concept, but I really like getting the windmill over there where that numeral 2 is, even if we don't complete the southern portion of that parking, but to really give a visual impact to lead people into the park. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Muntz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to add my thanks, deep thanks, to the CAG group and to the staff and to the facilitators. After attending the first meeting, it was like, are you kidding me? We have goats and lions and tigers in here, and I'm not sure how they're going to get them all to come up with a consensus. But they did gently, and it went. And it was, they did a marvelous job as well as staff. I'm really excited that 1A and 1B, that as the plant gets finished and we're working on the interior, that we can be working on the outside. So, you keep that momentum going, and that we've already identified some funds because of the pile of dirt. You know, we have to replace that and repair that, that there are at least some funds to get it started. Because as you finish and have the opening of the plant and you have 1A completed, that creates momentum, and then it goes into the other. And we can have, hopefully, people looking for funds for the rest of the phases. I too very much like the idea of the windmill, our icon, being over there in that center. I think that would be a huge visual. They keep talking about a roundabout, we're Pioneer and Highway 20, but if you were to see that windmill, that would just be marvelous. I mean, really exciting to bring in. Also, wanted to say that I am in favor of relocating the RV park. This park, yes, it's nice to have the RVers there and stuff, but this park is our city park. It's our gift to our children and their children. And this is where they come and they make memories. It's nice to have the RVers there, but it's not built for RVers. I mean, it's built for us to use, and it's our gift to the city, and it's a lasting legacy that has been continuing. And so, but I am in favor if, you know, move it close. Have no idea what the Friend property is going to be, but you know, that would still put it in the right location. Don't want to put pressure. And the other thing is, is the community room. Yes, we should put it in our budget. We should start planning for it, but not necessarily in a park close by. I like the idea from the Brooks Plan that was mentioned by Councilman Pagal a while ago, that there's been property across from the ball fields, that the city owns it. Mr. Massey suggested at a meeting he would be in favor of helping us acquire or gifting it to the city and having it there that's close by. There's available parking. They would still have the view of the water. And so, but it definitely needs to be in our budget so we can start working on it, not necessarily taking up a huge space within the park, because there's so many other things you can have. And once building's there, it's hard to take it away and have green grass to look at. So, marvelous job, the concept, let's move it on, and let's keep the momentum going. And glad there's at least some funding to hopefully get all of 1 and 1A done would be fantastic. And then from that, it's just dominoes. You keep going. And I think for a lot of the grants, you have to have a plan approved because they'll say, well, what do you want to do? And if you say, I have no idea, then you're off their list. But once they can see the progression, I think it is much easier to obtain that money. So, thank you very much. That's it.
Yes, Councilor Hyson.
I might as well round this conversation out. I think everybody else has had a chance to talk. I, if, again, Dido, thank you to the members of the community advisory group. If it seems like we are falling all over ourselves, it's because we know what it feels like to spend hours and weeks and months agonizing over details like this. And I think it's really easy for people to have an opinion or be critical when they're not the ones spending hours and weeks and months agonizing over details like this. Do I love everything about the plan? I don't. But what I do love is the fact that it's the community that is presenting these concepts to us. You know, this isn't something the seven of us came up with. And because it was a, a community-supported effort, I will support it right back. So, thanks again, not just to you, but to everybody who chimed in on this. It's, hopefully, it's going to be wonderful. I don't, I don't want to have to wait all the years for it, but what are you going to do? So, I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in, but I can go ahead and make a motion. Okay, sure.
Councilor Muntz.
I'd like to ask just one quick question here of you. You have on this plan a, two wetland water features in there, two areas. Are those to mitigate the possible removal of the wetland drainage ditches along the north property line and along the, be the west property line along the road?
They are regulatory in nature. So, the construction of the clean water facility itself impacts the far eastern end of that, what we know is the drainage ditch, but which is actually a regulatory wetland. So, we're impinging in the buffer area. So, we have mitigation that we need to do in that area. And then for the, for the remainder of the drainage ditch slash wetland along the northern boundary line, while, while you don't see a buffer there today, since we now know that is a classified wetland, we have an obligation to provide mitigation to enhance that buffer. So, there's both the regulatory portion of it. It also has a practical purpose, is that we are still using that for some flood control storage as part of our flood control prevention.
The, which, now, wait a minute. So, the, the wetlands that are on this concept that are being put in as mitigation, that is for the impact from the wastewater treatment plant, the increased impervious surfaces?
We're not putting any in, Mr. Almberg. We have existing wetland today that we have to address.
Along the ditch line of the north property.
That whole ditch is, in fact, a regulated wetland.
Right, right. I understand that. So, that's going to go away, that potential, no?
No, sir. We are affecting it on this end here because the, the hard surface and the building of the wastewater treatment facility falls inside of the area which is identified as the regulatory buffer.
Okay.
Along that, that edge of the wetland. So, we have to address that. And so, we're doing some, not to get too technical, we're doing some buffer averaging in that area. We're shifting where that buffer, buffer has to go. Think about like squeezing a balloon, it's popping out in another area. That's what we're getting in this location here. Along the entire length of the ditch, since it has now been delineated as a wetland, that we know officially that it's a wetland, even though you don't see a buffer there today, we're required to, to provide some level of buffer in that location. And so, this feature here helps us address providing that required buffer. Essentially, we have to do enhancement at that location.
Okay. So, it's a buffer enhancement, it's not deleting that wetland drainage ditch.
Correct. We are not taking that away.
Okay. Is there a possibility that we could mitigate the loss of that area over on the city property way over to the west? We have the marsh in there and then beyond the marsh. Is there some way to do that so that there will be a, a connection between the asphalt area and that park so that future development would actually have access into that park? Does, doesn't it seem like down the road that that would be a benefit to everybody?
So, I hear two or three different points in that I'll try to address for you. Could we do off-site mitigation, assuming that we get approval from the necessary permitting agencies, Department of Ecology and Corps of Engineers? Yes, you could. Obviously, that's not their first choice. The regulatory structure says we, first of all, don't impact the wetland at all. If we have to, we, we take care of those impacts on the same piece of property. Our absolute last choice, from their perspective, is going off-site for the mitigation, but it is a possibility. I can speak to that. I can't speak to what would the elimination of that ditch do to the flood storage that we're also providing. That's, that's outside of my area. What you don't see in this plan because of the scale that we're, that we're dealing with here, but is, what is discussed in other areas, is that there are, there will be physical connections between the northern boundary of the park and the southern boundary of those commercial properties. They just don't show up at the scale that we're talking about here. So, it's not the intention to have a barrier along there that prohibits pedestrian connection through that area. In fact, the revised plan opened this, this throat up. If you, you might recall the previous version, that was much, much narrower. And so, we've opened that up to really emphasize the idea that there's connection there, but there can also be connections in other locations.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Councilor Hyson.
If I, if I, a number of council members have complimented staff on, on this project. And while I have the honor and pleasure of being the face this evening on this, I do want to acknowledge that we've had a lot of other folks working on this. Joe Stowell and Brett Arvidson from Engineering Shop have been silent partners in this project to help keep us moving along. Somebody mentioned our consultants. Want to give credit to Erin Taylor from Enviro Issues who helped corral those meetings that you're talking about, Mrs. Muntz, and Gil Williams and his shop at Green Works, who are the folks responsible for these drawings. And then Jeff McGraw from NWA, who is our architect for the clean water facility, who was also a big part of this. So, we had community members, we had staff members, but a very talented team of outside folks helping us as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Hyson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for mentioning all of the consultants and the rest of the team because they're all very impressive. I did have a question that I forgot to ask in my excitement. The windmill. Councilmember Servadius touched on this earlier. The windmill currently is inside the Phase 1 area, but it's going to go in the Phase 2 area. So, what do we do with it in the meantime? I mean, do we put it in storage? Like, what, what do we do with the windmill until we get to Phase 2?
So, this gives a great opportunity to provide an answer that I haven't had a chance to provide yet this evening, which is, if we look at these phase lines, this gives us the general idea of how we're going to go about this. But we've already begun the conversations at the staff level, and we know that there will be different pieces inside of each of these phases that might technically be part of something that's shown as Phase 2 here, but it's really 1.1, something along those lines. And so, we'll look at each of those things on a more fine scale as we get into those areas. Things that can be left in place until the quote-unquote "the correct phase," we would do that. Maybe we have to move something up the phasing scale to take care of it sooner rather than later. This just gives you the basic idea of how we intend to move about the park, but there'll be an awful lot of detail that we have to work out.
Okay. So, yeah, just because we're wrapping up the landscaping around the clean water facility doesn't mean we can't be working on the roundabout.
Absolutely. Right.
Perfect.
And it's also tied to funding, right? As you've heard us say it a number of times when we talk about capital improvement plans and projects or the tip, you know, just because something is identified as project number four, doesn't mean we're going to do projects 1, 2, and 3 if we figure out how to fund project number four. We're going to bump that up the list. And the same sort of thought process could apply here as we, as we get into the funding of each of these individual pieces.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other council input questions? I'd like to quickly say thank you also. I asked a few people to be on the CAG. I think there's been an excitement and that I can feel in the city and in the community for this type of thing. We've got more volunteers than we're used to having. It's wonderful to see that. I can't thank them enough. I think the, the process was well, well-done and well-vetted, and I, and I just appreciate it. I will do everything I can from my seat to make sure that we move forward. I remember making the choice on council, and when this site was selected, my feeling was that this is an opportunity, that we need to seize this opportunity, and we need to make everything around it as, as, as good as we, as, do the best job we can. So, I think we're off to a start, and I'm, I'll do everything I can to, during my term, to make sure that, that we keep this off the shelf and on the desks and working on it. So, thank you again. How would the council like to move forward? Councilman Servadius.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 16-15, adopting the Windjammer Park integration plan.
Second.
Then a motion by Councilman Servadius and a second by Councilperson Muntz, and the recommended action to approve Resolution 16-15, adopting the Windjammer Park integration plan. That's the motion is to approve that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. We have one last session, and that is an executive session. We will be going into the council chambers to discuss pending litigation pursuant to RCW 423110I. So, I don't know what the expected, 30 minutes? Okay. So, we'll go into executive session for 30 minutes.
I want to get your thoughts.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the Oak Harbor City Council June 7, 2016 meeting. We've been in executive session for a little over 30 minutes. We extended the time. No actions were taken, and I would entertain a motion to, yes.
I move, will you adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Muntz, seconded by Councilperson Servadius, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye. If anybody, if anyone's interested in baseball, the Mariners are up 6 to 0 in the bottom of the fourth.
And that was unanimous. Nobody opposed, right? Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Okay.